Call the meeting to order at 7:02. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have the motion?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Okay, items been approved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the agenda will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. All right, approved unanimously. Next, we have the approval of open session minutes of October 1st, 2018.
Make a motion to approve the open session minutes of October 1st, 2018.
Second.
Is there any discussion, edits, or information you need about those? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, open session minutes are approved unanimously. Next, we have community comments. Is there anyone from the community who's here who wishes to speak?
Yes, I have a few comments. I've never spoken before the school committee, so I apologize.
If you could identify yourself just so we know.
My name is Greta Von der Leut. I have two children, both who attend Clough. I have concerns about three different areas. My first concern is the lack of a BCBA person in the school district. I don't know what a BCBA is. It's a board cert, board cert, like behavior analyst. There is not one in Clough, and there's not one in Memorial. And from one understanding, the one at Memorial was asked to leave during latter part, I mean, during the school year last year. I'm understanding that it was the same one who was allowed to continue in Clough and complete the school year. It's my understanding as a parent that this individual was somewhat in comp.
It's out of order to discuss personnel issues if you have, you know...
So basically, my concern is that there is not a BCBA person in Clough and in Memorial. It is affecting my son's education.
Okay.
It's also affecting other children's education who require this person. This person usually provides assistance for children with autism and also with children with learning issues who have behavioral issues because of learning issues. The school district, because the person usually is mentioned in the service delivery grid, is currently violating or not in compliance with many IEPs, including my son's. I was never notified that this was going to occur. I was not notified of what staff gap measures were going to be put in place to address this issue, nor was I notified any compensatory measures that may be done. And this is just me. I'm sure it's also affecting other parents of other children in Memorial and Clough. So I don't understand why this continues to be an issue if this person was so not... I just don't understand why it continues to be an issue.
Okay.
If the school district continues to have violating IEPs contracts, which are legal documents. I'm concerned because my son does not have this person, because others don't have this person in the district. A free and appropriate public education, which is my son's right by law, is not occurring. So I like to know...
So is that, that's the first issue?
That's the first.
That's all three that you would have?
No, that's the first.
All right. This is the first, at least to my understanding, that this committee is hearing of an issue such as this. And we are basically going to listen to what you have to say. We'll need time after the meeting to really understand all sides of the issue and present some kind of response to you. Okay, so you're not going to get a proper answer?
I'm not, I'm glad that... I don't, I'm glad I'm not getting a response today. I'm glad you're going to look into it. What I possibly don't understand is why this is the first time you're being made aware of something of this nature. I thought a school committee was supposed to help protect and advocate for all children that are within the district. And so I'm kind of surprised since I'm talking about many children with autism that are housed in the school district and many children who have behavioral issues because of learning issues, that this is the first time the school committee is aware. Because it's been, this started, I know it started last year and continued on into this school year for Memorial, and it continues to be an issue in Clough. I mean, in Clough, it started at the beginning of the school year, and it still is an issue.
Okay. It's the first that this committee has heard of issues like that. You're typically not aware of every, you know, manifestation of issues that go on in a day-to-day capacity in the school. Once we're contacted, we typically become aware of the problem, but I don't recognize that as something that's ever crossed my email or, and I haven't heard it from the rest of the committee members. So your second point is?
My second point is that I'm questioning whether we have adequate school counselors in each of the schools. The reason why I'm questioning that is that I fought for the better part of two years to get my daughter to have adequate counseling. And it was not until I presented to the school, excuse me, her team, their licensed professional report, saying that she would benefit from these services. Only thing I can think of, a couple things. My daughter also attends Clough. These, the, I'm hearing from the grapevine that because the BCBA person is not in Clough, that the school counselor is at times being used to provide BCBA services. And so she's being dragged away from her counseling duties. But I'm thinking that there's also increased pressures that the students are facing with use of smartphones, increased pressures because of the opioid crisis here. And so I just question whether there's adequate counselors in each of the schools. This is a topic that I'm very sensitive to because my daughter does have mental health issues. And I asked for a team meeting to be called within the school district of receiving that individualized education, I mean, independent plan. The school couldn't, or didn't, or would not, I don't know what the term you would like to use. They didn't call a meeting for 10 days. I mean, no, they didn't call a meeting for three months. They were supposed to call a meeting in 10 days. And the other reason, I mean, so that's a major issue to me. I do, I am doing my damnedest, excuse me for my language, not to have my daughter end her own life when she gets older because that tells significantly, this is an issue, I mean, for her. So when we had a ninth grader take her own life last spring, which was around this 10 days after I turned in my report to the school and asked them to call a meeting, they didn't do it. So to me, I, I'm not asking the school committee to violate this girl's hippo or furrow or add more grief or burden to that family, but I'm asking the school committee to consider, did that child ever, was that child ever on the radar of any of the schools in all her schooling here? And if she was not, then I find that a concern because I really believe it takes a village to raise a kid, not just a family. The third issue that I have is that I'm finding that the Division of Student Services does not follow policies and procedures, but in terms of timelines. And that definitely is affecting my children's education. I had two independent, no psychological evaluations done, one for each kid because it became quite evident that the school district was having a hard time providing appropriate services for them. And I'm not calling the school district of that. I'm just stating that's why I did that. I asked the school district to call a meeting within 10 days with receipt of these documents because that's what's required. That's what the statute states. For my daughter, they did not call, they did not call a meeting until three months later. For my son, almost two months later. And if you look at the IEPs before their receipt of the Individualized Education Plan, and if you look at their IEP after their receipt of the Individualized Education Plan, you can see that there are dramatic changes. And so for that, I can honestly say that free and appropriate public education was not attained by my son or my daughter during that time period, which is again something that's required by the law. And the other thing I can say is that there was a team meeting that was called for my son, and they were supposed to send minutes of that team meeting and then one for within 10 days. Both Ms. Todd and Jennifer Ransdale both decided that it was not needed to do that. They finally did send minutes within, after 20 days, but also after me sending them and C.C. and Dr. Mooscheck an email saying, "These are the statutes that you are violating by your inaction." And so this, the reason why I'm bringing this up is I'm on, this district I know. I'm a strong advocate for my kids. I have an advocate that helps me. I taught in, I mean, I practice in schools as a physical therapist. So I know I'm on them like anything. And if the Division of Student Services is not following timelines with my kids, I question what they're doing with other parents and other families who are not on them as much as I am. And if I'm the only parent that this treatment is done, that's okay. I'm not happy about it, but I'd rather it not being done to many other parents and children. So having me getting the special treatment, I'd rather have that happen than having the other parents and children having this kind of treatment. So basically, I'm asking the school committee to really look at whether, what the school is going, district is going to do in terms of lack of BCBA. I'm asking the school committee to look at, are there really adequate counselors in each of the schools? Because that's the only reason why I could think of that I had to fight so hard to get services for my daughter. And lastly, why are there, why are policies and procedures and timelines not being followed within Division of Student Services? Or is it just for me?
Okay. Thank you for bringing your concerns to the committee. You're going to need to give us a little bit of time to do our due diligence and make sure that we hear from all voices in the conversation, much of which will be, you know, discussions with Dr. Mooscheck and the staff. So again, we can follow up by email. You can call me. I think I have your email from earlier, but you're welcome to contact the school committee via email, and we will keep you appraised of what we find. And we hope to get that done in a timely fashion.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment at this point? Hearing none, we shall move on to the superintendent's comments.
Okay, thank you, Lee. Well, good evening, everybody. The first issue that I'd just like to bring to the floor, and I know we had talked about it back in the spring when we approved it, is the fact that our formal evaluation of the Spanish immersion program is going to commence first thing tomorrow morning. The consultant that we have coming in, Amanda Seawald, is spending the next three days within the district, starting first thing tomorrow morning at Memorial Elementary School. And I included in the packet a link to her schedule. It's chock-filled with classroom observations for each and every single SI classroom, meetings with our students, meetings with every teacher in the program, on Wednesday evening, meeting with the SI Advisory Board, and then two separate parent focus groups. She's doing one Thursday afternoon, I'm sorry, tomorrow afternoon at Clough and then one Wednesday evening at NIPMUC. Additionally, we've put out a survey to all of our students in grades 3 through 12 that are in the program, to every single parent and to all staff members. And so far, we've got a really, really good response rate on all three of those. So just as a reminder, if any of you either individually or as a group would like to connect with her, please let me know, and we can make it happen.
Okay.
Second piece of business, I included in your packet an updated model memorandum of understanding that was issued last month jointly by the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office along with the Association of Chiefs of Police and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And a lot of work went into this. And to put things in perspective, just looking at it at a superficial level, this document is now 12 pages. The existing MOUs that we sign on an annual basis with both the Mendon and Upton employees right now are about three pages. So it's a lot more dense as far as the parameters in defining the roles and the responsibilities of a school resource officer. But keep in mind, this model MOU is kind of commensurate with the criminal justice reform law that was passed last April. I think that, as I say in the background notes, the things to keep in mind here is that this MOU does a much better job in kind of defining the roles and the responsibilities of the SRO. I think in some cases, in some districts, there's been situations where SROs have been used almost as a school disciplinarian, almost in like this quasi-assistant principal type role. It's very explicit in that, that they're not really enforcers of school regulations per se or mental health providers or anything of that sort. But then it also gets more explicit on the school side in defining the process of selecting the officer. It can't be just strictly based upon seniority and so on. So locally, myself and our two chiefs, Chief Kersey and Chief Bradley, have had the opportunity to review this, and I anticipate within the next week or so. We might make some slight cosmetic changes, but getting this approved and signed by all parties. I just wanted to make you a product of that.
Okay.
And then last but not least, just kind of a shout-out to our friends at Muth and the Ed Foundation. Two weeks from yesterday on the 28th is the Second Annual Spooky Run, which will be at 10 o'clock at NIPMUC. And then the Kids' Race is at 9:30. I just put this in because I'd like to call attention to it. I know President Kathy Meckel and the board have been really working diligently on this. Last year, as a matter of fact, they cleared over 3,200 for, based upon this event. So they're hoping to match that or hopefully better that. So please, publicize it.
Okay. Okay, next we move on to Subcommittee Updates. Policy Subcommittee is chaired by me. So we have five policies that were in your packets this evening that have revisions in terms of wording and language to comply with the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act and also just some other kind of edits, you know, low-level, sentence-level edits. So have you had a chance to review the policies? Does anyone have a question on the table right now? Okay. If there are no questions or discussion that needs to be had right at this moment, I will accept a motion to waive first read so that we can go to vote and approve those policies.
Motion to waive the first reads so we can go ahead and approve. Second on the policy.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And so we have to do each of these one at a time, right?
Yes.
So can I have a motion to approve revised policy AC nondiscrimination?
I make a motion to approve policy AC nondiscrimination.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion on policy AC? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The policy passes unanimously in its revised form. Can I have a motion to approve policy GBA as revised, equal employment opportunity?
Make a motion to approve policy GBA equal employment opportunity.
Okay, is there any discussion on policy GBA? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. This revised policy passes unanimously as well. Next is policy GCF professional staff hiring. And I have a motion to approve the revised version of GCF.
I make a motion to approve policy GCF professional staff hiring.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we have it. And GCF is approved as revised. Next, policy GBA, I'm sorry, GJB. So this is what happens when we have five. Can I have a motion to approve revised policy JB equal educational opportunities?
Make a motion to approve policy JB equal educational opportunities.
Yeah. Okay, any discussion on this one? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. Passes unanimously. And finally, policy JFBB school choice in its revised form. I have a motion to approve this one.
I make a motion to approve policy JFBB school choice.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed nay. And this is also approved unanimously. So the five revisions will be updated on the website and in the policy manual. Okay. Next, we have unfinished business, Mercy Capital Planning.
Okay. You have in your packet an updated capital project list. And realize this kind of goes back to the last meeting that we had back on, I want to say it was something like June 22nd. I know it was right towards the end of the school year. And taking a look at the capital projects and what needed to be prioritized and probably refined as far as our cost estimates. Maybe, Jay, you can kind of speak to some of those further refinements that have been done?
Sure, yeah. You'll probably notice that where we were at about $6.5 million, we're up to about $10.5 million now. Ken and I sat down and went through this the other day and decided that we underestimated several things. And we tried to, you know, one of the talking points that we have is separating what I would call that we have to do it and the stuff that we'd like to do because it will make things easier to maintain in the long run. Because it's kind of a fine line between the two. But just like, you know, we had thought originally that the air conditioning units, we would just have to modify them to accept a new style of freon because the style we have is being outlawed in 2020. But in reality, the units are 20 to 25 years old, and they're probably not going to last. And it's probably not worth spending $30,000 to do that just so we can die in six months and then have to replace it. And of course, as you know, the unit at the high school that we thought would be about $35,000 ended up being close to $100,000. So we upped those costs. We, you know, added in a few things that I don't think we're necessarily on the list to start with. The stairways at NIPMUC, you know, those concrete steps that go from the band room auditorium down to the athletic wing are starting to crumble apart based on the fact that we spent $15,000 on the ones over here. Probably be more for those. So we added some of those things in. We've done a lot. We've done a lot of projects over the last five years or so to help upgrade things, but there's a lot of stuff on this list. NIPMUC and MISCO are the two biggest needs. NIPMUC shows a little higher amount than MISCO, and that's only because we need to do a roof there, and the roof factor's in at a couple million bucks. And we already did the roof here. Things like renovating the athletic fields, the wells that we thought would be $15,000 apiece would end up costing almost $35,000 to put that one in at the football field. So that's, you know, we just upped prices is what we did based on some of our experience, but it's an estimate. All it is is an estimate. We'd have to go out and bid on almost all of this. Some of the things like converting from pneumatic to electric control systems, that's something that we, Ken comes to me after like three or four times a week, he comes to my office and tells me about some other pipe that's leaking somewhere in the district. Clough Memorial, there's always pipes leaking. You know, pinhole leaks, we got to find where it is, and we can never find it. So some of that stuff would be alleviated if we had electronic controls and not air controls. But the buildings are aging. You know, MISCO was renovated in 1997. NIPMUC was built in 1997. So you're talking 21 years, and a lot of the stuff is original. The carpets in the classrooms are original. And they're pretty worn out. You know, the bathrooms, you know about the bathrooms in this building. We actually have met with BBT to talk about possibly doing some work here. They're starting to try and get some pricing together. But you're probably looking still at $50,000 to $60,000 per bathroom, and there's six-child student bathrooms in the building. That's $300,000 or $400,000. It just all adds up, is all I can tell you. So we tried to make this a little more relevant to what it is. Security cameras, as we discussed at the meeting, we did NIPMUC over the summer. It was about $22,000. We need to do the other three buildings. There's some grant money that I think is going to be available through the state to potentially maybe do something at this building to get cameras on the outside. But we really need to look into that as well. And then, as always, we have the leach field here, which, as Joe likes to say, was one flush away from closing the school. It actually works okay, but it's not going to work, you know, it was put in, I think it was probably updated in 97, but it was installed in the 60s. These things, that's just not going to last forever. And I think that's what we're faced with. And the question is, how do we, what do we do to approach this? Because this is an overwhelming list that, you know, we, I don't know if we could tackle all these at once, but we're going to have to start to tackle some of them.
Are these in the order of priority?
Not necessarily. I tried to prioritize them as best I could, but I think that anybody could look at this list and say, well, as an example, you know, I think a backup generator is more important than security cameras because if we don't have power, the cameras aren't going to work. You know, the leach field is lower down on the list, but if the leach field ever fails, we have a problem. So then it could move up. So I don't know that it's necessarily prioritized. I did the best I could, let's put it that way.
And do we know which ones of these will have, I'll call it, a corresponding effect on reduction of expenses or anything like that? Offsets or anything?
I think some of them, some of the upgrades to the HVAC systems will have an offset to the cost of running those systems down the road. I'm not sure that you're actually going to save as much as you're going to spend to upgrade them. I can tell you, we did, through the Green Communities Program, we installed computer management systems, brand-new ones, at Clough and Memorial. So it was a program that each town did. They were able to apply it to our schools, and they put in these new systems, so it didn't cost us anything. I can also tell you that we had nothing but trouble with them since they'd been put in to the point that we're ready to take them out and go back to the old ones. So sometimes newer isn't always better. And I, you know, I'm not sure how to attack it, but we just constantly have to keep calling this firm out that put him in because he's apparently the only person that can work on them, and it just doesn't get fixed. But, so I, you know, I think there's some of that. But I, quite honestly, I think the cost is going to, you know, any savings is not going to be realized by the cost of doing them. Some of them is just maintenance that has to get done.
Well, so I think the list, if I'm not mistaken, the list and the budget it would take to free up to support fixing everything is bigger than what... is bigger than what is available.
Within our operational budget, absolutely.
Okay, so, so we need some way to getting a better idea of the priorities here. So what I would suggest is having an understanding of the consequences behind each one of the items and then the timeframes under which those consequences will occur.
Right.
So that we can start ordering them to make decisions about what types of requests we have to go get to get additional money if it's necessary. Some of these things we might be able to postpone. I read a couple of them and I thought, well, we probably could postpone that. But something like a backup generator sounds like a good idea in the short term if it's, if it's going to fail imminently.
Well, we don't have one here at Misco.
Oh, okay, well, that's interesting.
So.
So it can't even fail.
Right, right. So, you know, I mean, I look at, I'll use that as an example. I look at that and I think, you know what, we should have a backup generator in this building. But then again, this building's been here for 60, 70 years and has never had one and we seem to be doing okay. So I put that lower on my list, quite honestly.
So that's an example.
Right.
Example, if it's something we were relying on and we had to use it for some emergency system or whatever it might be, then it would have been a priority. But now I find out, see what I'm saying?
Right.
I can't do the prioritization and I don't think any of us could. If we don't have an understanding of the consequences and the timeframe for it being
I agree, I agree.
Being non-functional.
Yeah, and I struggle with that a little bit myself because again, I basically rely a lot on Ken Schwanair and his expertise with the buildings. But when you talk to Ken, every one of these is critical, needs to get done right away, so it's really hard sometimes.
I understand. That's a forest for trees, you know, that's a forest for the trees' problems, so.
But I, but I think as a team though, some of these questions we could answer internally.
I think that as a committee we could.
And I think I kind of go back to where we were in June. And I think about feedback that we got on the K-12 insight survey, okay? That, you know, we could probably make a case that, okay, well, you know, from a health and safety perspective, I think we could have a great back and forth about the urgency of replacing all of the student bathrooms here at Misco. But I think about getting feedback from our constituency and also thinking about how that impacts the culture and the climate of the school and moving forward and so on. To me, I place that up as a high priority issue of something that I want to tackle within the next year or two. I think about something that's not even on this list. The whole issue around furniture and the functionality of furniture and trying to accomplish what we want to accomplish with kids. As you guys know, I was out for a period of two, two and a half weeks and the first day I came back, I did walkthroughs with Jen Manin here at the middle school and I went into a sixth grade classroom and the teacher, math teacher, kind of redid her classroom and instead of desks, she has round tops. And she also has whiteboards all around. So she's got kids in stations, she's got kids working in collaborative groups and so on. It's everything that we want for education. It's everything that's in the vision of our new strategic plan. So I started talking to her and I had talked to Jay about her and her situation before. And it turns out, you know, here she is on Amazon and on Craigslist trying to find round top tables. Literally kind of going throughout the school, beg, borrowing and steal, stealing so she can get these kind of like rickety round tops. You know, so, you know, we ended up having a conversation. We're going to do what we can to make things happen, but that's only one classroom out of like 45 classrooms. And I think about the big picture of things that we need that I think would be high impact, shot in the arm items for Misco. One is clearly the bathroom issue. But the second one is the furniture and the functionality of how teaching and learning follows it. But then I also think about the big picture of how, in my opinion, we're giving STEM the short shrift. The fact that we don't have science labs and functional science space and so on. So yes, I am all for a new leach field. It's extremely important, but I think about teaching and learning and I think about the culture of learning here. And to me, those are high priority issues that I think it's incumbent upon me as superintendent, but also you as a school committee, to really get behind and start a campaign for. I'll get off my soapbox.
And to counter on that a little bit, the balancing act, I think, is the instructional, instructional side of things like science labs or like teaching spaces and the things that would shut the schools down so that we have to put kids in a different building because they don't work.
They're not more with each other.
Correct, and there's only, you know, so, I mean, in my mind, I'm thinking that we're going to have to do some kind of capital bond and we need to pick out certain things and maybe part of them is restoring science labs and, you know, furniture and stuff. But on the short term, we just tend to tackle the little, the little items, you know, like security cameras. If it costs $20,000 to do cameras in a building, we probably can try to tackle that at the end of the year. Again, as you all know, if we have a good snow, it's snow and ice removal year. That's how we've tackled these things. But it is really a balancing act, but I do think the subcommittee can look at this and sort of categorize instructional needs, facility needs and shut the building needs.
I mean, I can't tell you how many times, I mean, we've been in situations like this so many times within, within trying to manage an organization. But you, you end up with a strategic priority, you end up with a, let's call it a maintenance or a, just an upkeep priority and you have to merge the two decks together somehow, right? The only way we're going to understand the maintenance priorities is to understand where the, where the end time is, the drop date where we can't do without it anymore. You mentioned a deadline of 2020 for replacing the freon.
Right.
Is the air conditioning that much a priority that we can do without it? I don't know. So those are the types of things. We need to know in the maintenance list, what are the top priorities and when are the drop dead dates? And what are the consequences for not, for those not being fixed? And the priority list for strategy for educational priorities. We need to know what the top ones are there that you would recommend. And then, then we can, as the, as the planning committee or capital planning committee, we can start merging that deck together. And then we can see the status as we improve ourselves and as we start spending and fixing these things, we can see where we stand, you know, with the town. And I, that gives us also plenty of, plenty of ammunition or evidence to go into talk with the, with the town about these things. So that's what we need.
All right, so we will take this list and we'll basically convert it to a spreadsheet. What we'll do is we'll do a Google Sheet with several lines, kind of speaking to what you're asking for as far as prioritization, but also the urgency as far as the date desired versus the whole maintenance piece around this will not function anymore.
Yeah.
Some of it's clearly going to be speculative.
It's fine.
Yeah, at least it gives us an idea or something to go on because at the end of the day, some of it is going to be objective from a maintenance standpoint and then there's more subjectivity when it comes to the learning and teaching piece. Oh, well, yeah, and sometimes it's not, like even the bathrooms, I don't know if that's learning and teaching, I think that's.
It's culture.
Culture.
Yeah, that's a good, that's another, I mean, you probably should have a separate list for that. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I see, and honestly, I do see what you're saying.
You have to, you have to show progress in each one of those areas, so that's a way to go along.
That's important.
Yeah, it's already, it's already in a spreadsheet, so I just put it into a PDF for this.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a Google Sheet, but it's an Excel.
I think the other question that I put a column in just to at least generally answers, is there corresponding offsets on that? It may not compensate for the full expense, but if it's actually going to help to some degree and it's a required piece, I mean, like a roof is required.
Right.
We're going to need a new roof in Nipmuck in a few years. The reality is, you know, we bundle that up with what else is there. We're going to have to look at what's, like, what's required and what's the time horizon for those requirements. To what Ken's been saying, I mean, he's been talking about the leaching fields here at Misco for a long time.
Well, we've gotten, we did some work on it a little bit to find out because for a long time, the thought was that it was on the football field up behind here. Turns out it's not, it's actually over in the outfield with the baseball field. And I think there's actually two fields out there. I mean, it depends on who you talk to. I've talked to people that told me, you know what, if you're not having a problem, don't touch it. And that's generally pretty good advice, but it's just that one extra flush and they don't want to trouble.
Septic failure is not fun.
It's true, and we just had septic issues and basically the guy said, it works until it doesn't.
Right, right.
There's no way to really test, you know?
Yeah. Well, the other issue we have here is the well and, you know, again, the well, the water's fine, you know, but the well is in the boiler room and it's in this pipe and as it gets older, rocks start to collapse into the pipe and you can't get a machine in there to drill it and core it back out because it's in the, it's in the boiler room. So then, you know, relocating a well plays into where the septic field is or the leach field is. There's a lot.
But just, I mean, just so that we don't, we don't run around in circles.
Yeah.
There's a way to build a mitigation plan in case the septic system fails, right? So you say, okay, we will run it until it fails.
Until it fails.
And in that period of time, that will allow us to build up enough money and savings or take advantage of the time value money to get that money for the time when it does fail or when it shows fail.
Prepare for it.
Prepare for it, get a mitigation plan together so we know what the consequences are. So I'm just saying, we need to be a little bit more organized about it because there's no way to set priorities right now. Right?
Yep.
So we need to add a couple more columns to the items, the cost, estimated cost, but some of the ramifications and potential offsets if we have to do it.
Yep. I mean, something like a septic system, you want to have money in your back pocket that you've reserved for that, for that problem, right?
Yep.
Any further discussion? All right, next we move on to new business, so I'll find the status of 2017-18 district action plan.
Okay, thank you. You have in your packet the, the action plans from last school year. I apologize because we kind of, this year, kind of put the proverbial cart before the horse. And I think it was part because there was a sense of urgency to get the new strategic plan completed and then put before the committee and then, then the following resulting 18-19 action plans before the committee as well. Usually I do this in August, so we're a little late on this, but it's essentially kind of reflecting upon the many steps and I think there was a total of about 50-something here in last year's action plans of how well we did with regard to completion and then what's work that still lies ahead. So what I'd like to do in relatively short order is to kind of go over what those four overarching goals were last school year and then what were some of the successes and what were some of the areas where we still have needs. So the first one was around engaging in a community-wide exhilaration of the beliefs and practices that empower students with opportunities for modern learning. So I think there, this obviously was a major push district-wide, starting with our leadership team. And really what we kind of talked about getting started on day one of the school year was to look at practices that we referred to as pathways or modern learning pathways. Things like project-based learning, like design thinking, like Genius Hour or 20 Time or Maker Education. And really kind of trying to promote teachers to really push their practice and try something new. So that really was a huge focal point of our professional development in our teacher evaluation process where every teacher has to establish a professional practice goal. We really tried to promote these modern learning pathways. As you know, district-wide, we did the screening of the film Most Likely to Succeed and also a book study of the same title. We had Will Richardson and Bill Daggett, as you know, in for presentations, again, trying to push people in their practice. One of our major action plan steps was the whole strategic planning process. Obviously, we were successful with that and culminated in a new plan. Again, I think our, I give our principals and our assistant principal a lot of credit in other, carving other structures such as the 21st century learning conferences, even during staff meetings, in the case of Nipmuck, with students, these food for lunch, food for thought lunches to ask questions about what makes for deep and meaningful learning. And then one of the steps kind of spoke to having the first ever Inspired Learning Convention, which was held at Nipmuck in May. We had, I think it was approximately 85 educators from different districts here to kind of observe the practices that we're promoting within our district. As far as actions that are in the plan that are still in progress or we, we need further work, I think a continuation of the PD around modern learning pathways. I think we still need to do much more work with our parents and community members and kind of making them aware of what are the specific skills and competencies that our kids need in the present context. And I think the work with our strategic plan and specifically the profile of a graduate really should be our linchpin there. And then there were several steps in this and also the last school that kind of spoke to coming up with a district branding. And, and to be honest, that very much strongly came from the high school. But I also get feedback, also particularly from parents, about consistency from our elementary grades to our middle, to our high school, about a district brand. And some of it is quite frankly superficial as far as, you know, what are your mascots? What are your team names and so on and colors? But I think some of it is more profound in talking about an identity, a brand around teaching and learning and the, the types of learning experiences that we want for all kids and being consistent in our messaging about that. So second goal was around really social, emotional learning and reviewing, developing and implementing supports for all students that promote social, emotional and academic success. So again, I would say along with modern learning, social, emotional learning was the second focal point for the overwhelming majority of our professional development activities. As hopefully you remember, I believe Dennis and Maureen presented to this committee our revised D cap or district curriculum accommodation plan. And the, the major revision that occurred last year was including social, emotional learning strategies that could be used at that tier one in all classrooms with all kids. Again, last year was our first year being one of approximately, what is it, about a dozen districts in the XL network? And really what came out of that work, and we'll be talking about this more in the coming weeks, is the formation of a PBIS or Positive Behaviors and Intervention System at the elementary levels and also creating an SEL implementation plan. A lot of work also occurred at the secondary level, but really strongly here at Misco in looking at what exactly we're doing for response to intervention or RTI and kind of placing more formalized structures and procedures with that and that work is continuing. And again, I would say last school year are partnerships with outside mental health agencies, particularly Riverside and Family Continuity continued to be strong and it actually really intensified during a couple key crises within the district. I think this is an area where there's always going to be continued further work and progress. Something that we did not get time to allocate appropriately is doing a comprehensive audit of K through 12 student support services to really look at, do we have sufficient staffing, but are we also deploying staffing commensurate with where the real critical needs are? I, I see that as a two-pronged question. where the real critical needs are? I, I see that as a two-pronged question. This Thursday evening will be the first meeting of this school year for our CPAC, which within the last fifteen months or so has been rebooted. I think this is something that is still a work in progress, and we really have to ensure that we give it appropriate support, but also programming that really pulls in parents so that it can continue to be something that's dynamic. Again, I think the work is continuing, and I'm optimistic, again, particularly here at Misco, that you've got a lot of the right players around the table to see through having a very robust RTI process. And that work really needs to continue. The third goal really kind of spoke to the review and revision process of the curriculum formally, and specifically to kind of talk about modern learning practices. What are the types of things that we've done? As you know, we've been now on a, I want to say, a four-year journey with regard to curriculum mapping and using the Rubicon Atlas Online Application. And last year was the first year that we started stage three. Now, if you keep in mind, stage one kind of speaks to defining what the standards are and the specific outcomes are for units in every course. Stage two kind of is defining what the assessments are for each unit. Stage three is really the most substantive. It kind of speaks to what exactly are the materials, the content, and the actual instructional strategies that are used. So needless to say, Maureen and the team of curriculum assistants and department chairs were super, super busy with this. Something that they'd done for the first time, I believe in the history of our district, was to establish quarterly vertical K through 12 curriculum meetings by content area for our four core academic areas. That was super, super helpful so that the elementary people have a better understanding of what's happening at the middle school and vice versa, and the middle school also with the high school people. I believe Maureen also presented to this committee about the formal curriculum review and revision cycle and establishing that, and kind of mapping out what the priorities are going to be vis a vis content areas over the next five years. Also, last year was the first time that we really, in a very strong, robust way, now have data blocks and common planning ton K through 12 for all of our professional staff. And I think I put in the background notes, at the elementary level, it's done by grade level. At the middle school, it's done by interdisciplinary teams. And for the first time at the high school, through creative scheduling, it's done completely departmentally, which is huge at the high school level and is very difficult to do. And then, last but not least, Dave Quinn and his work through professional development, but also, you know, I, I think he has the highest impact in the work that he does with individual teachers or teams of teachers, is introducing this Four Shifts Protocol by Scott McLeod. And in the plans, Scott McLeod actually, last school year, kind of renamed it. His original moniker was Trudecott. But it's a protocol that kind of gets teachers thinking about using technology in a much more purposeful manner, and kind of pushing their practice rather than just kind of at a rudimentary substitution level. As far as work that needs to be done, probably this complete school year and into next school year, we will take to complete stage three in the mapping process. We talked about having more specific action plans related to the district technology plan, which was developed and approved during the 16, 17 school year. So kind of more revisiting that and tweaking what we have in place, but coming up with some real concrete plans. And then, something that we did my first couple of years as superintendent, we kind of want to revisit, starting with our district leadership team, but also bringing teacher leaders into the fold. And that would be starting inter-district walkthroughs to kind of, as teams, go into each of our four schools and kind of observe professional practices, and then kind of share out what we observed. And then last, the final goal, which I think I always say is kind of the perpetual goal around improving two-way communication and really engaging our families, partners, and their children's education. We had as a specific step, the second administration of the K-12 insight survey, which we very much use to inform our strategic planning priorities. As a leadership team, we studied a work to kind of look at giving feedback to specific teachers on communication strategies, and specifically the way our teachers are providing feedback to students, but also providing feedback to families. One of our goals was using the updated Blackboard Connect system for emailing, texting, and so on at all four schools. We were successful in doing that. And then, at the high school, having students work along with John Clements and Mary Ann Moran and Dave Quinn on a brand-new podcast, kind of highlighting modern learning and the various opportunities that kids were happening. I think there's a lot of work that still needs to be done in this area, and specifically one step that really needs to get done and shouldn't be much to get done, but creating something that's very user-friendly, a quick splash page that could act as a quick reference guide on our district-wide website. I see the, the second and third bullet points going hand to hand, and they're actually in the 18, 19 district action plans about kind of reviewing how are we communicating classroom to families, and then creating a guide of exemplars of classroom home communication that really should be modeled and with a greater consistency for effectiveness. And then that last piece that I touched upon, district branding guide based upon our new vision, mission, and beliefs around learning. And again, specifically, I think we have a lot of work ahead of us over the next, particularly two or three years, to publicize what the profile of a graduate is and what are the specific outcomes that we want for all kids. So again, those were the four overarching goals. I didn't get into the specifics of every single action plan step, but that's kind of the, the basic gist of areas where I think, you know, our specific steps were completed, but areas where we still have work in progress or we already need to complete things.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Next, we have correspondence. Is there any correspondence to review?
My knowledge, no.
Okay. Are there other matters not anticipated by members of this meeting within forty-eight hours of the posted meeting?
Hearing none. The future agenda items include the findings and recommendations of the Merzty Homework Committee on November 5th, and accountability and MCAS results reported out on November 5th as well. All right. Is there a motion to return?
Motion to return.
Can I close in favor? The meeting is adjourned to eight o'clock.